I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order December 18th, 2017. And we're beginning just a little bit after the hour. We have just a slight change in the order of the agenda. Our chairman, Mr. Robinson, will join us at approximately 7:30. So we're going to, we will do our public comment and then we're going to hold off on the interview and vote to appoint new school committee member until approximately 7:30. We're going to start doing the budget overview immediately after the public input. Then we will sort of return back to our agenda items. So right now, I'd like to see if there's anyone who's here to offer public comments on any item that is not on the agenda. Chief Sagala, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here due to a statement I made on Wednesday night at the Board of Selectment meeting. So I just want to clarify my statement that I made the other night at the Board of Selectment. In my remarks on Wednesday, I was speaking generally about the experiences of law enforcement since the passage of marijuana ballot measure last year. In my remarks, I said, "We deal with marijuana with kids now in the high school on a daily basis." To clarify, I did not mean or intend to imply that the Redding Police Department responds to the high school every day for drug issues. This is not the case. I meant in my remarks that we have seen a sharp increase in marijuana use, possession, and illness as a result of marijuana use and marijuana edibles among high school-age youth recently. Our department deals with teenagers and marijuana on average every day. There is, in my opinion, a feeling among youth we encounter on calls for service that marijuana is okay now because of the law change, even though marijuana remains illegal for those under 21. The issue of drugs, including marijuana, opioids, and others, remain a leading cause of both crime and medical emergencies in our communities. It is something we encounter every day as police officers. I hope this offers clarification. I regret any confusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sagala. I appreciate it. So for folks who are at the Board of Selectment meeting, Public Safety was presenting their budgets and this was just a confusing statement that then got reprinted in the press. So really appreciate Chief Sagala and Officer Obati and Erica McNamara also came this evening. I just would like to make a brief comment. I was at the meeting and I've been on the Board of RACASA for 10 or more years. I was actually in the room to sign the first bylaw, which was in this building before it was actually demolished. And I really think it's important to emphasize this point to parents. So scientific research and evidence shows that known chemicals in marijuana act on and alter the developing brain and that addiction to marijuana is a true fact. Rates of addiction are higher with early onset and misuse. There's no doubt that this is a gateway to other drugs, immersing the users in drug culture. At a very minimum, regular use of marijuana dulls vibrant personalities and impedes motivation, changing the life of the addict, of the addicted person, and their family. Occasional use by adults with fully-developed brains is seen as acceptable by some. Any use by children age 12 to 21 is illegal and a significant risk as it can lead to a pattern of regular use, which will negatively impact brain development. I urge parents who still think smoking weed is no big deal to immediately and aggressively re-educate themselves and become the parent who says no. We must be role models and firmly support that no to alcohol, marijuana, and other substance use by our preteen, teen, and young adult children. And we have policies that, in the school, that support that. But the emphasis here is on what we see outside. And our EMS, I mean, our fire and our police, our public safety respond within the community and they see all of this and they see the harm that it does. So again, the emphasis, while the schools and the school committee have policies in the school, working with the police and with RACASA have developed very strong policies, it can never take the place of what a parent can do in their home with education and care and support and attentiveness to what their children are doing. So I really appreciate all the support from the chief, from the police, and from RACASA. Officer Obati had anything to add?
I just want to make one more thing clear. I couldn't ask for a better relationship that we have with Dr. Doherty and the school department as a whole. I go on record as saying that I think there couldn't be any closer relationship, the two of us work together hand in glove for all the issues that we have, not just about drugs, but any issues that comes up at any of the schools here in town. I thank him for that too.
I just want to, that's why my hand was up. I want to piggyback on that because I think we have a very strong and unique relationship here in Redding that benefits kids, between the relationship between the school department and the police, and also that we have a community coalition that's led by Erica and a very strong SRO. And we've had, we've been very fortunate. We've had many strong SROs, starting with Lieutenant Obati several years ago, that because of that relationship and how we share information together, that benefits kids and it benefits what we're trying to do here. So there's always going to be problems, but I think because we have that relationship, it solves a lot of issues.
I mean, I know he cringes when his phone rings at 9 o'clock at night at me, but it's fine.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming here to make us do this.
Anytime. Thank you.
Something I actually wanted to say on Wednesday night at the meeting too is that I appreciate this working relationship and I appreciate that we're heading into very tough budget times. And I would really like to underscore how important it is that we think proactively about continuing RACASA and making sure that the funding is there somehow, to make sure that we're not scrambling at the end in danger of losing someone and something that has been so vital to the progress, stemming the tide even. I mean, I think it would be a lot worse if we didn't have RACASA and it's a lot better because we do. And so I want to just say forthrightly that we need to plan ahead and not wait till the grant's running out to figure out how we're going to pay for the continuation of this collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move into the, begin the FY19 budget overview, budget process overview presentation. And then, as I said, when Chair Robinson arrives, we'll sort of go finish that out and then go back to the agenda and begin with the nomination. Great. Just to give a little context to what we're doing, we've actually given this presentation a couple of times now. We did it at Parent University, which was very well received. We actually also used this when we had our first budget liaisons meeting. So just to set the stage, this is much more a 10,000-foot overview, just to give some context as to how it's developed, the various cost centers. This actually is not meant to be a financial projection, so there actually are no FY19 numbers as part of this. What we really wanted to do was have this discussion such that we can allocate as much time as possible during the three meetings in January that we'll be presenting the numbers to focus on that. So thank you for allowing us to pull some of this forward. So we're going to go through the budget process, high-level overview of the FY19 budget, which is really a quick recap of the financial forum that was held in October. We'll talk about some of the ways we're working on communication and also give an update on the calendar for the upcoming January meetings and then if there are any questions as we go through it. So the first thing that we wanted to do, which again typically we do this in early January, but we thought this would be a good opportunity now as we're starting to enter the budget season, is just to go over a quick overview with folks of what we consider the three broad categories of funding sources that make up the overall budget. There is the, what we deem the operating budget. That is the day-to-day expenses of the schools and the town. So on the school side, it's all of the salaries, materials, supplies, and any services that get dedicated towards the students. The revenues, as we all heard during the October financial forum, that's property taxes, any state aid that we receive, excise taxes, fees, and if there's any sale of land, go into the pool of money that's available. As we'll probably say multiple times through this process is that the property taxes can only increase 2.5% per year for prop, 2.5, and then any new growth unless an override is presented and passed. And then one thing that we do like to remind people is that at the end of the year, any funds which are unencumbered and unspent get turned over back to the general fund. We actually are not allowed to carry over any funding in the general fund. The capital fund, usually how I look at that, that's typically through discussions we have with the town manager and town accountant, targeted at 5% of the total operating budget. Those are items that are more significant capital improvements. So a couple of items to think about is if you have roof replacements, boiler replacements, district-wide technology funds. Those are more discreet in nature and are typically one-time events as opposed to ongoing day-to-day operations. One thing that is being funded out of the capital plan over the next 10 years is the RMHS litigation that we talked about in the fall of last year. The other area that is part of our overall funding would be grants and revolving accounts. So the grants are funding we receive from state and federal funding sources. And the revolving accounts, those are generated from user fees, tuition, so if kindergarten full day, kindergarten tuition, in-district students for special education, extended day, those types of programs. Ticket sales, so football, hockey items where we're, or drama where money is coming in that we can then utilize to help offset some other areas. The item that we do remind people throughout this process is that the grants and revolving funds are utilized for a very specific purpose. We cannot utilize funds out of a revolving account if it is not 100% tied to the generation of revenue from that account. And if I go too quick, please stop me. I have a habit of going through these. What we did want to spend a couple of minutes on, just to walk through, we do get a lot of questions about how our budget is prepared and voted on. So from a school committee standpoint, the school committee votes on the five cost centers. So they vote on the bottom line of each cost center as well as the total budget. And those five cost centers are the administration, regular day, special education. We have what's called the district-wide cost center, which are four of our smallest cost centers, athletics, extracurricular, health services, and network and technology. And then we also have the facilities, which this is purely the school facilities. Tomorrow night at the Selectment meeting, the Town Corps and Town Facilities will be presented because those are part of the town budget. Ours is specifically just the school custodian side. That's part of our budget. So we go through and the school committee approves each one of those. We are not allowed to transfer funds between the cost centers unless they have been approved through school committee. So I'll go through these relatively quickly, but just to give everybody a reminder as to what makes up each of the cost centers. The administration cost center, which is the smallest of the cost centers, that is the central office. So the central office staff within that is all of the legal and auditing fees. We're required to have an audit each year, so the funding for that comes out of the administration. All of the employee recruiting and hiring, telecommunications services, miscellaneous supplies and expense or coffee or machine. We also have the tax sheltered annuity matching that comes out of that cost center as well, which is the contractual obligation under the teacher collective bargaining agreement. The next cost center, which is the largest of the cost centers, is the regular day. So that is where all of the building administrators, so all of the principals, assistant principals, secretaries, all of the regular education teachers, tutors, paraprofessionals, and any other support staff that supports the regular day process. Also within there are any of our specialists, any, in addition to the salaries, any types of mentors that stipends and other stipends that are part of the collective bargaining agreement are in there. All of the curriculum materials, professional development, mandatory transportation for students is included in there as well. And then basically all of the day-to-day materials that support regular education are part of that cost center. Within the special education cost center, similar to regular education, it includes all of the administrators, secretaries, so the team chairs are included within this. Mrs. Wilson and her assistant are part of this. All of the special education teachers and paraprofessionals, and then any of the specialists associated with special education. We also have an extended school year program that we run that is also part of the special education cost center. We do have any legal services associated with special education are part of this cost center. Home and hospital tutoring a part of that. Any outside consultative services we have a part of that. The other part, the two, I would say, more significant line items that are part of this are out-of-district transportation and out-of-district tuition. So even though those are accommodated costs, and when we go through, those do get added back to our actual budget that we then manage and maintain. So they do get added back to ours and that tends to be an area we have received some questions when people try to reconcile it. For the district-wide programs, those are the four relatively smaller cost centers.
Can we just go, I just want to clarify. So the extended school year program is not the, our after-school extended day.
No.
Extended school year is to provide services that are required for students per their education plans, their IEP or the special education plan. It's not the after-school extended day program.
It's not extended day.
Extended school year is very different. Okay. I just wanted to highlight that.
I need to come up with a different word than extended. And I didn't like summer program. It just didn't sound right. So the district-wide program, these are the four relatively small programs that we have combined together. So athletics, that includes an allocation of a high school principal, secretary, and coaches. So this cost center is made up of all the officials, event details, crowd monitors associated with all of the various sports activities. It also includes equipment, field maintenance, and repairs. The largest expenses in this area are the facilities rentals and transportation. The rentals mainly are the pool and ice. The extracurricular, this is a relatively small cost center. It includes an allocation of the assistant principal, includes all of the stipends per the collective bargaining associated with extracurricular with the various shows. It also includes memberships, royalties, as well as transportation, and then any supplies and equipment that they have, which are typically minimal. The next two, so health services, that includes the director of nursing and all of our nurses are within this cost center. Also, school physician, which is a service we actually outsource. And then any medical supplies and equipment go through there. So right now, we have our AED machine, so we have maintenance on those machines in order to ensure that they're always up and running. That is funded out of this cost center. And then network, networking and technology, so that is the network manager and his technicians, so his support, which are the computer technicians. It includes the internet service, software licensing. So basically, all of our maintenance and licensing agreements run through this call center. Because they're deemed to be district-wide, so it's not just a regular day or a special ed. And a lot of this, to give people a little bit of context, why we appear to have so many different cost centers and accounts is because we're required to do very detailed reporting to DESI at the end of the year, which breaks all of these out in very prescribed And then the last area that we talked about is the facilities, and this is the custodial manager, all of the school custodians, their equipment and supplies, as well as the outsourced training service we have at college and high school. What's not in the budget, these tend to be through grants, donations, user fees, is typically field trip expenses. Those tend to go through if it's related to extracurricular with students pay a fee to go to them, which covers the cost of the transportation and getting there. Food services is completely, we are very fortunate, that is completely self-contained within its own revolving account. There are no general fund dollars that go towards it. Non-mandatory student transportation, we actually pay a fee for non-mandatory schooling. The before and after-school programs, which is the extended day programs that we were just talking about, a lot of the enrichment programs, which are through extended day or if we receive donations that go directly towards a specific enrichment program. Again, to the extent we get donations and they are very specific, we utilize the donations for the exact purpose they were given to us. We are very fortunate that we do get a lot of donations for coaches for athletics, as well as extracurricular. We do have some that come in for tutoring and some of that may be through grants and then the fees we receive for kindergarten and preschool go into the revolving accounts. And then to the extent we can take an offset, we take an offset for them. We did want to give a quick update on the grants. So there are a host of grants that we receive. On the state grant side, we receive the racial imbalance, which is our Mezzo grant. The other part of state reimbursements we receive is what we refer to as circuit breaker, and that is reimbursement for special education expenses for out-of-district tuition. So that is an annual amount we receive from the state side.
And that circuit breaker is based on some factor of the foundations? There's some formula for that? It's not all of the expenses.
It's not all of the expenses.
Some small portion. What's that formula again?
So it's based on the foundation amount and then we get reimbursement depending on allocation of a percentage over the foundation. So right now, we're budgeting.
It's over like three or four times the foundation.
Yes. So it's about $42,000. Once we hit over $42,000 on either a student in district or out of district, the state reimburses us. This year, we're anticipating.
So typically, the state historically has reimbursed at about 70% to 72%. This year, they cut it to 65% reimbursement.
So why don't we save any questions to the end, just so that you can get through the presentation? Thank you.
The other grants we receive, we've broken them down. Entitlement grants, so that's our Title I, Title II-A. The special ed IDEA grant, this year we received a new Title IV, which is a relatively small amount, but we'll take it. And then the last two are also special education grants that typically go, one is for professional development and the other one is typically for the preschool. And then the one federal grant we receive, which is a competitive grant, which is a five-year grant, is the school climate transformation grant, which we have two more years left on that. That was a five-year award. What we did want to show people is what we have seen happening in the grants. So in the current year, our total grant funding has decreased by $260,000. Overall, we are not sure what will happen in fiscal 19, so we are looking at this as we're building the budget to make sure we're taking that into account. And as Carolyn had gone over, we also, within the special ed IDEA grant, there is a portion of that that we do have to proportionate share, allocate out to any private school students attending any of the schools. But in Redding, a portion of our grant gets allocated towards that student population. So we will continue to monitor this. What we've also seen is the grants are also coming out later and later during the year. There is some grants that still the amounts have not come out and the special ed program improvement, which is the PD grant, just came out last weekend. We did see that that was almost a $19,000 decrease in our allocation. So I'll turn it over.
Thank you. So I'm going to go pretty quickly through this part and then turn it back over to Gail. And so, you know, why are we in the situation that we're in? I think all of us in this room understand that, is that as a whole, property taxes can only go up 2.5% each year plus new growth. There is not a large commercial tax base in the town of Redding and new growth is limited, although there is some long-term plans already in place that are starting to reap some benefits from that. We have expenses that go higher than 2.5%. Mostly those are in accommodated costs, which we'll talk about in a little bit, health insurance, special education, and other accommodated costs tend to go up higher than that 2.5%. The Chapter 70 funding formula is not as sufficient and over the last four years, I'm going to show you a graph, we've received approximately 100% increase each year. So why is that happening in Redding and maybe not in other communities? Is because as part of the formula, they look at the property values in the community and the ability to afford education. And that is one of the things that actually is working against us in the formula. And you will see that we're getting what is called the whole harmless amount each year, which is about $25 per student, which is about a 1% increase in the aid each year, about $100,000. As we all know, the override did not pass in October of 2016. And really, in order to maintain a level service budget, the budget should be around 3.5% to 4% a year to keep the same services from one year to the next year. So this is a chart that I was just mentioning about the Chapter 70 education funding over the last several fiscal years. You can see in the last four fiscal years, the percent increase has been about 1%, which is about $100,000 per year. How do we compare with our comparable communities? So we take a look at about 37 communities, which also include contiguous communities and middle sex league, as well as communities that are similar to Redding. And you could see that, when you're looking at the per pupil, that Redding is ranked 30th out of 37. And I have in discussions with members of the community, I don't know if, you know, if there's quite an understanding of how the per pupil is, number is generated. So this is part of a report that Gail puts together around the October-November timeframe, which takes a look at expenses, not only in the school department budget, but services that maybe the town would provide as well. And so through that, the state calculates a per pupil expenditure. It's the same, it's the same end-of-year report that every community has to submit, so it's the same information, the same data. And so even a slight increase of, say, $200 would generate about $800,000 to $900,000 additional funding in the school department budget. So even that small of an increase would have a significant impact. But you could see this is, you know, comparable to other communities where Redding lies. This is a line graph that shows over the last several years where the state average is compared to where Redding is. Redding is in the blue and the state average is in the red. And then another chart that we have shown in the past is where we rank for per pupil expenditure. And you can see in FY06, we were up at around 232 and over the last several fiscal years, we're around the high 200s, low 300 range. And so again, it's not necessarily the major dip in the line that's the issue. It's the fact that we have not stayed at a consistent level over time. And that means that other communities are going over ahead of us in terms of the amount that they're spending on their, on their per pupil. And so that also affects how you compare to other communities, how you're competing for the same resources, for the same type of staffing, things like that.
So then this, the next couple of slides are just a quick overview of, most of this was discussed at the October 11th financial forum, but just to put it into context as we move into the budget process, is that, and some of this was slightly accelerated this year, so a lot of these numbers were done a little bit earlier than they have in the past in order for us to do, I know the Selectment meetings are last week and this week and our start in early January. So in October, the town manager and town accountant look at all of the available revenues in order to determine the total pool of money that's available to be allocated. Also at that time, they do determine the accommodated costs. So that then determines the amount of expenses that are subtracted from the revenue and then the remainder is what then gets allocated between the town and school for the operating budgets. So that's how that basically works. And typically, the school's allocated share of the residual amount is about 64%. These are the slides that the town manager presented at the October financial forum, which walks through the projected which walks through the projected revenue and some of the high-level assumptions. We do want to let folks know that we have been working with the town manager and the town accountant as we've been pulling our budgets together, and we do anticipate there's going to be a slight adjustment to these slides based upon a review of the projected revenue numbers. So we are anticipating that there will be a slight increase to our accommodated costs as well as our operating budget. It's about $112,000 is where we are, and some of that will be split between the schools and the towns, so we're in the process of finalizing that information. So that is good news. We're very fortunate and happy that we have, we do have a really close relationship, and we've been having a lot of discussions with them as we're going through some of our numbers. So these are the typical assumptions that they use each year. Again, it's not an exact science because it is very early in the year. So some of it is property taxes based upon new growth, so if people are building additions and whatnot, they have that. The excise tax, again, it's a little bit difficult because you may have a great year where everyone goes out and buys a new car, and then it sort of stagnates for a few years, and then you may have a pop again. So they, they tend to look at historical averages and then true it up as, as we go throughout this process. The intergovernmental revenues, the largest number of that is the Chapter 70 funding, which we just talked about, has a very minimal because we're at the hold harmless amount. One area that comes up quite frequently is that these numbers are best estimates, I don't want to say best guess, but best guess estimates, but there is also, we have discussions with the FinCom throughout the process. To the extent any of these change by a significant number, they have voted that they would help to fund any shortfall within these numbers because it is, at this point, very early in the year, when you think we're talking about a budget that's well over 12 months from now. So the accommodated costs, these are the items that come off the top, and these are typically items that are mandated that have to be paid. So within that is benefits. The town manager works very closely with, by the collective bargaining units to come up with the benefits. They work very closely through that. As we talked about, the capital funding comes off as part of that, and that is to make sure, even though the operating side is extremely important, if you're not maintaining your buildings and your equipment, eventually, that is going to come back and haunt you. So we always want to make sure while we are continuing to fund the operation that the capital piece is also very significant in order to keep the safety and maintenance of all of the buildings. The debt piece is part of that, and then we have all of the energy costs. We talked about the education, so that is the special education out-of-district as well as tuition goes into that number. When we're building this, we also factor in the Circuit Breaker reimbursement we are going to get, so that's actually a net number since we know we're getting that, that's already factored into the accommodated costs. And as you can see, those costs tend to rise over 5% per year, so that goes to what Dr. Doherty was saying earlier, that if those costs continue to rise, that amount of money comes off the top, and if your revenue is not increasing at the same rate, there's less available to be distributed. We talked about some of the driving factors are healthcare, which does continue to, to rise, and then the out-of-district. For us, the biggest driver this year is that, as we showed earlier, due to state funding, we're receiving $200,000 less in Circuit Breaker relief. So this is just a quick summary to show again that for fiscal '19, revenue projections are anticipated to be just under 3%. Accommodated costs, 5.7%. And again, these numbers are going to change slightly, but we will show those numbers as we proceed through the budget process. So what we wanted to show is how, because we do get a lot of questions about how that number then gets allocated, and then the pieces go apart and the pieces go together. So for the total budget, it's about, I need better glasses, 62% non-accommodated, 38% accommodated is how that works out. So the 38% gets carved out, it's the 62%, then that thing gets split between the town and the schools. So you can see, this is what the total pie looks like. So you have the split between the municipal side, the school side, and the accommodated side. What we do, because we have realized that it does get confusing for folks, is when they look at us and they say, "How did you present a $42 million budget when you only had a $38 million budget?" That is because the accommodated costs that we walked through earlier get added back to the school budget and the town budget, and we are responsible for managing those, even though they're carved out as accommodated costs. So that is why the number looks like it's larger than it should be. So we are in the process of preparing what we call a level service budget, so it's basically doing a bottom-up budget of everything that exists in the current year, putting everyone through any contractual collective bargaining agreement increases and any known increases. We will then compare that to the actual amount of money we've been allocated, and that will determine the deficit we have, and that's what we will be presenting in January. So we will be presenting two budgets. One will be the baseline budget, which will be the balanced budget, which will tie to the number that has been allocated from the town. And then the step, second part is what we would call a restorative budget for discussion in case there is an override that is presented, that we will present that as part of the school committee process in January. So we will present them separate and distinctly, so everyone will know what the budget is.
So as we're developing the FY '19 baseline budget, which will be the superintendent's recommended budget, it'll be a balanced budget, these are the priorities we're, we're looking at right now. Certainly, we want to focus our priorities on the district improvement plan, which the school committee did, did vote to support in, in the October-November timeframe. Those are the four areas that you see there that our focus is going to be on. We certainly want to also keep class sizes in grades K through 2, between 18 and 22 students. We want to make sure that the middle school interdisciplinary model is kept as a priority and that our high school juniors and seniors have access to the coursework that they need for graduation, and also that we focus the, the time and effort and energies on the Josh Eaton School Improvement Plan process. So as we were developing, and we are developing, the FY '19 Superintendent's Recommended Budget that will go to the school committee, these are the areas that we're focusing on around the, the teaching and learning piece as we move forward. These are the drivers that we are identifying as we're developing this budget. So certainly, you have your contractual stepping color increases for represented and non-represented employees. As, as the school committee knows, and I think the community knows, we negotiated one year contracts for all of our five collective bargaining units, so that means that we are going to be renegotiating contracts again this year with all of the collective bargaining units. So we'll be starting that process again shortly. As Gail mentioned, there'll be an increase in special education tuition transportation expenses. That's that accommodated cost number that you saw earlier. You know, one of the things that I do want to spend a minute on is to talk a little about the, the seven FTE middle school teachers that were restored last year late in the budget process and what needed to be done to restore those positions. So the $450,000 came through a combination of several areas. One of those areas is that there was $100,000 of free cash allocated as a one-time amount for the school department budget. That was not put on the base for this year. So what that means is, is that that would need to be made up in an FY '19 budget. In addition, the other remaining $350,000 were one-time cuts that we made in expenses that we would not be able to sustain. So we cut, if you remember, we cut the per pupil at our building levels by $100,000. We cut technology by $50,000 from $100,000. We reduced the substitute teacher line item to balance the budget by $98,000. So all of those things, when you put them all together, those are all unsustainable expense levels that next year, we need to build back into the budget. So we are already starting with a $450,000 hold as we are developing the FY '19 budget. So although, although we did restore the seven teachers for this year, that was a one-time Band-Aid approach to, to, to try to make sure that we kept the middle school model intact, and so that, with the hope that there would be an opportunity in the FY '19 budget to get additional revenue. The other things that are driving the budget is the state Circuit Breaker program, which Gail talked about. It's a $200,000 increase. We are seeing, and we've been already told by both the ICE Authority and the YMCA, that there will be increases in rental fees. We've also, we are in, under a contract for transportation, and we have known increases there. We are going to see an increase in our contractual cleaning service. We have that known increase for next year. And we are up for renewal of all of our antivirus protection and other software programs. It's something that we do every three years so that we can get a better discount, so you pay a one-time amount every three years, and so next year, lucky us, is the year that we have to renew. So those are all projected budget drivers, and we will certainly go into those in more detail when we present to you the budget in January. These are some of the guiding principles that were discussed in October at the school committee meeting. As you can see here, there's actually two slides on this, and they range from, you know, making sure that obviously students are the top priority, not to use any gimmicks or use of, you know, increasing offsets artificially for one year and then going back, making sure that we're keeping, you know, the social, emotional, intellectual, academic lenses of, of the child intact. On this slide here, we want to make sure that we're focusing on core academics, the science curriculum, making sure that we balance our cuts across levels. And I think you could see here that, so this is the guiding principles that we received in October from the school committee. Certainly, we will do everything we can to follow these principles, but a lot of these are competing for each other, so it is not, you know, there are going to be times when we're not going to be able to follow all these. So the, the last piece of this that we want to just focus on is the communication piece in the timeline. And so, are we communicating this process? Well, Mrs. Dowd and I have gone through several school council and PTO meetings over the last couple of months, and we've been doing a very similar presentation for them that we've done here tonight with you. I went to Barrows this afternoon and talked at their school council meeting about the process. We have brought in over 20 budget liaisons, and we've started educating them on the budget process. Every school is represented. We also have community member as part of the process. Their role is to really be the communication pipeline to help educate the greater community and the schools about what is going on with the budget process. We are sending out budget bulletins. We've done three already in our newsletters, in how that is being communicated. We will continue to do that as we go through the process. The budget bulletins are meant to be short, one page, no more than that, which are going to hit all of the, the key bullet points about the topic around the budget. Certainly, the school committee meetings is a key part, and the ongoing community discussions. So these are all ways that we are communicating this whole FY '19 budget process to the greater community, and we'll continue to identify other ways as well. And then finally, the calendar, and we have changed the calendar a couple of times just based on what we're observing could be happening looking ahead into January. So the, tonight is, is, I guess you could say kind of the kickoff, we're, we're doing like a pre-budget process overview for you. January 8 is when we will be, begin our school committee presentations. We'll be doing the three smallest cost centers and school capital. We then would be on January 10 doing the two largest cost centers. So by January 10, all of the major budget presentations will be over. On January 11, we are anticipating a large contingency for the public hearing, so we have moved, originally, we had special education on January 11. We have now moved that to the 10 to provide more time for the public hearing. Also, on that night, we will be doing the override budget presentation, and that will be after the public hearing. On the 16th, it will provide opportunity for the school committee to ask questions, to get any information answered, and then on the 18th will be the final vote. The next day, we would then present to the town manager the school committee budget. The town manager then will begin putting together his budget, which he will present to FinCom at the end of January. And then the school department budget presentation to FinCom will be on the 7th. So that's, that's the calendar. The one change from the last time is that we are moving special education to the same night as regular day. And I believe that is it.
John, did you?
Just want to call the words left and right.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Any committee questions about that particular thing? Yes.
Very good overview. Thank you, Bill. I had a question about accommodated costs. And so one of the things that, out-of-district, we talked last week about out-of-district special ed, are, so accommodated costs, is it correct to say that they're shared between the town and the schools?
And the school budget.
So there's a portion of an accommodated cost. So if we have special ed expenses that are accommodated costs, are, is a, are a portion of those costs paid outside the school budget?
They are not paid, I wouldn't say they're outside of the school budget. What happens is, the way it works is they have the total revenue, that, I speak with my hand, so I apologize. There's the total revenue that is available from revenue. There is a 100% subtraction for all accommodated costs, whether or not they are town or school, so all of the benefits, which is a combination of town and school employees are part of that number. The debt, which is a combination of town and school. Energy, a combination of town and school. The out, special ed, out-of-district, and transportation is a 100% school expense, but because it is mandated, it is part of the accommodated because we actually have, we actually cannot pay that. So if, if something were to happen, we would be obligated to pay that expense. It's not an item I can turn around and say, "I'm just not going to fund it." So it's a nondiscretionary item to do that. And then the debt pieces. So all of those are a 100% one-for-one come off the top from revenue, so I'm not sure if that's answering. So some of them are both town and school related, and the special ed one is a 100% school-related. I don't believe we're sending any town employees out of.
No, I just wanted to clarify that, just because there was discussion last week about moving $270,000 for regular day and special ed. I want people to be clear on what we were doing.
So what we did for that one, when we presented the first quarter update to the school committee last week, is we had gone through and looked at all of the various items within that, and we did have some salary savings through either open positions, hiring differences. So since we had the salary savings, we deemed it was appropriate at this point to transfer those salary savings to the special ed cost center in order to fund the deficit we are having related to out-of-district transportation. That's an item we will continue to monitor throughout, and if we come to a point where we are not able to fund it through salary savings, that is an item that we would go back to the town, either through finance committee or town meeting in April to explain the situation and request additional funding. But we felt that since we had the salary savings available, and some of them were open positions, that were resulting in us having additional expenses within special education, that that was, the prudent decision was to self-fund it.
Yes. Oh, just, so to be clear, the school is responsible for 100% of the special ed costs? That's what I'm.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
For anybody who was listening to both conversations.
Yes, we are 100% responsible, but we do know that there is an avenue for us, such that if our accommodated costs, which are not discretionary, that we do have two avenues available to us to go back to the town to request additional funds.
Thank you.
I appreciate clarifying that. I think for people who have been here before we did the accommodated, the accommodated came about so that we could assure that these nondiscretionary items, like the benefits in special education, would get funded, and the idea that there could also be a community priority that might cross the schools and the municipal functions, that might then, that that would be a way to sort of get that funding prioritized, sort of above either the municipal or the school budget, but that, that was.
And that it didn't become a debate on town meeting floor for more money.
So I don't remember when we, how many years ago we did that now, but accommodated. So I don't remember when we, how many years ago we did that, no, but accommodated.
Any other questions?
That was pre-meet.
So, yes.
I can ask after you.
Go ahead and ask.
No, I was just going to ask about the budget representatives. I know we're calling it representatives now.
Liaisons.
Liaisons, not parents, because it can be people from the citizenry, not just families. Are those positions all filled now and closed?
Yes.
Okay.
It was advertised, we, we had a deadline and...
And we had a kickoff meeting last...
Late November, yeah.
Okay. I was asked if there were still openings, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
This is what...
I just have a quick question. So the, I, it was slide 14, IDEA went down, the change is down $6,000, but the, that doesn't reflect any movement of proportionate share funds that would come out of that $1,014,000 that would have to go to support special education of students in private schools in Reading?
Correct.
Or Reading students?
Just in Reading.
No, okay.
Just in Reading.
All right, and it's a complicated...
Any student.
Any student in Reading.
But not Reading students that go outside Reading.
Special education. The key there was, it could be a student from Bill Ricker, but in Reading at a private school, and we have to allocate the proportionate share. Okay. So that number doesn't include anything?
No, this was purely, if you were to look on Desi's website, and it said, here's your IDEA grant in here. So we have the same proportionate share, if you will, for our Title II-A grant. We also have to carve out a certain amount of money for the two private schools within Reading, and now we have that for the IDEA grant.
Do you have any guidance on what to do next for FY19?
We do not, what, what I have been building in is looking at what the decreases have been and assuming that we will see a continued trend of that. So when I'm looking at, I'll, I'll page on the IDEA grant, because we love that one so much. Our largest grant, the bulk of that grant is salaries. So we do know between proportionate share and decreased funding, that some of the teacher salaries we have on that grant, we actually need to pull into the operating budget. And I would rather err on being slightly conservative and assume if it went down 8% this year, that it will go down another 8% next year, because that is everything we're hearing, is that the state funding and grant funding is getting tighter and tighter. The one that was a little bit of a shock to us was the program improvement grant. That one, the numbers just came out last week, and we saw an almost $19,000 decrease in that one. And they, a couple of the others that we're still waiting on, they're, they're basically cutting the number of people that are eligible for it. So I do anticipate this trend will continue into the foreseeable.
We, we are being told to assume that federal grants, all the federal grants will eventually disappear.
Is there any questions for the public, anyone?
Can I clarify one thing for me? Is special education transportation out of the operational budget, but tuition is out of accommodated?
Special education transportation is part of the accommodated costs.
Yeah.
Yes.
But when you, when you moved over funds...
We moved it out of the regular day into special education because it, we did not take away from, I don't want to say operational, but we didn't not take away from any of the mandated operational building-based budget. The transfer we did was a line item by line item, person-by-person view, to say, where did we have salary savings? Where did we have positions that hadn't been filled? Where do we have unpaid leaves? And we looked at that as a pool of money that was available across the board, and that is the only funding that we're transferring. We did not touch any other regular day curriculum, professional development, building-based budgets, that are not items that we would deem. This was purely because we knew we had positions that were vacant.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Love this term, but I think that's, you know, somewhere it's going to be something. Now, which ones of those grants have a limited time associated with them?
So the ones that are one year? The, um...
Well, the IDEA, the IDEA's one was...
Um, well, technically, no.
The school transformation grant has a...
The way that it works, the MECA, the racial imbalance, you have one year to utilize that. If you do not spend it down by June 30th, you return the funds to the state. The IDEA grant used to work that way, but because now they've added proportionate share holdbacks, you actually now, that one falls under the, you do have the ability to roll funds for two years, so that's more of a 24-month grant. They strongly recommend and urge you to spend it down in the first year, and it's usually a small percentage that you can carry over. Again, because the proportionate share is such a challenging number, they're allowing districts to carry funds over, because if you don't, and they deem you did not do your allocation correctly, they'll take it out of your future grant. So, that one, they allow you to. The early education, the program improvement, the early childhood improvement, those are all, you have to use them within the school year. So, interestingly enough, the special ed program improvement, the one that just came out last week, that will have to be spent down by August 31st. So they didn't say, we gave you the grant four months later than we normally do, we're going to give you four months to spend it. They basically just said, you still have to spend it in the same timeframe, even though we gave you four, four less months to spend it. Title I, Title II-A, those, you have the rollover capability, so you can roll that one into the second year. There were limits on how much you can roll over. The Title IV-A, that's a new one this year. My understanding is it's similar, because those all go together. The DSAC grant, that one, I don't believe we're getting that. This year, that was one where you only had 12, you only had the school year in which to spend it. The state treasures, that's actually one that Reading Cooperative Bank worked with us last year to get. That was a one-year, and we did a, a life fair we did with the high school students to show them how to do a budget and everything. So we knew that was a one-year. That was a great, the students had a great time with that one. The school climate transformation grant, we are very fortunate that we are allowed to carry that forward. They're looking at that as a five-year grant. So we're allowed to continue to roll forward unused funds as long as we have a plan to spend it down. The circuit breaker, you can have a year in reserve for that fund. So the way we are utilizing it, so that we have budget certainty, is the numbers you're seeing up there, so the $860,000 is actually this year's grant from the state that we are holding for a year that we will utilize next year. So you're allowed to carry 12 months forward for that grant.
And then you always know how much...
Right.
That's why we worked towards that model. There are many districts right now that budgeted 70%, that received 65%, that now have to cover that gap. So we feel this is a much more prudent way, is to budget with facts certain, one year in advance.
So, before we go on to the, to the next topic, I just wanted to say, historically, we've always asked the FinCom to present questions prior to their meeting with the school committee, and we'd like to continue that process as they're, as they are the representatives of town meeting on, on, on budget and financial matters. But over the last couple years or so, it's gotten out of hand where everyone's sending emails to the central office with lists and listed questions. You know, we have, obviously can answer some questions, but we prefer that if people have, public members have questions, that they try to get to the meetings to ask them, or approach a school committee member to ask a question. We, we, it just, I mean, it, you know, we, we have our director of finance spending, I'm not kidding, it days, just going through questions. And we don't want to stop questions, they're important, but please try to come out to the meetings and ask them, and, and not inundate central office with emails at the day before the presentation. Thank you.
The only thing I just want to add to that is, we have such a compressed budget time, we, there's essentially only 10 days. It's not going to be physically possible to answer the 150-plus questions that were answered last year.
And, and no question will go unanswered.
Right, right.
Will answer, just, if people can utilize the, residents can utilize the, the meeting dates, I know they're going to the selectmen's meetings and come to these meetings, and we'll stay here until all the questions are answered. Yes?
I think in the summertime, when we start laying out kind of the process, I, I thought we had talked about that all of the boards, school committee, selectmen, FinCom would post for all of the meetings, so that generally, we kind of, because it is such a compressed schedule, that we used to, well, you know, selectmen would go with their stuff, and then you guys would do your thing, and go to FinCom, and, you know, people could go. But because it's so compressed, I thought we were, had basically, all of us posted for all of the meetings, so that, you know, if FinCom had a question during the regular day, I mean, it could get answered, kind of asked and answered on the floor. Not that you wouldn't answer an email question or something that someone had sent in, but the fact that we would all sort of agree that we would sort of all be at each other's meetings.
Yeah, no, and I'm talking beyond, I, I know you're, you know, the, the boards, I'm just talking in general, public members as well, that, you know, that, that are engaged, but, you know, not necessarily coming to the meetings, but digging, digging the budget apart and coming up with a bunch of questions. It just, it would help them if they came and asked them.
You guys love that cookie?
Yeah. Yes.
It is right after the holidays, there might be some leftover cookies.
I think we also have office hours, and I know, I mean, I certainly, on January 10th, we could, I'm sure I can do an office hour.
Totally.
We could probably add, so that we had office hours in front of these, you know, at least the three meetings in January, and office half-hours, so that that would help. And I think it's, you know, it's just imperative that we are able to...
I also have office hours three times a week.
Dr. Doherty does.
And again, I, I just, in closing, like to say, there's no, we, we respect and want the questions, we just, and they'll all get answered, but we just got to kind of spread that around a little bit, so that it's not tying up Gail 24 seconds. Thank you. I apologize for coming in late, and we, we're going to have the appointment of a new school committee member, and like to do that. Now, I don't know whether the board wants, board of selectmen want to come up here.
Yep.
Yep. So, as, as, is it, as everyone knows, Dr. Nian had resigned from the committee, and we posted to fill his, his seat until the next election, and we're very thankful and appreciate that Sherry Vandenactor applied to that position. And I don't, basically, what I'd like to do is, if you could say a few words, and then if anybody has any questions from that, we can go from there. Is that fair?
Great. Hi, thank you for inviting me tonight. I did prepare a few remarks, and if you don't mind, I'd probably like to read them. It's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight, and I look forward to our discussion together. Before we get underway, I do want to acknowledge Dr. Nian for his many years of dedicated service to our schools, as an educator, an administrator, and a school committee member, as a parent. I'm really grateful for his service, and I wish him and his family health and healing in the upcoming months. So thank you. I want to also acknowledge my Jewish colleagues who are here, rather than being at home, celebrating Hanukkah tonight. Thank you for coming out. And the selectmen, who have had many, many meetings this month on the budget, and this is yet another one. So thank you to you also for coming out tonight. I trust you've read my application materials. Perhaps there are some viewers who haven't, and so I'd like to give a little overview of my academic history and credentials, and I feel that's especially important, because I'll be replacing someone, if I'm appointed tonight, who is an educator. I have lived in Massachusetts all my life. I'm a first-generation college student. I graduated from a public high school. I was truly blessed with the opportunity to attend Mount Holyoke College, where I majored in English. I received a scholarship that allowed me to study in Canterbury, England in my junior year, and that was probably the most educational year of my life, actually. Upon graduating from Mount Holyoke, I served as a Vista volunteer, and that program is volunteer in service to America, known as the Domestic Peace Corps, and that was started by President Johnson. I worked in Holyoke, Massachusetts with the Sisters of Providence, wonderful nuns, and did capacity building work in their shelters for homeless men, shelter for homeless women and children, and their household goods distribution program. After I served as a Vista, I went on to graduate school, and I earned a master's degree and a PhD in English from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. I've subsequently earned a graduate certificate in instructional technology for educators at New Mass Boston. I have more than 25 years of classroom and administrative experience in education, beginning with my work as a teaching assistant back in New Mass in my twenties. Since 1999, I've taught writing, literature, and academic skills at Springfield College's School of Professional and Continuing Studies in Boston, and I'm the school, a school-wide writing across the curriculum coordinator. In that role, I train faculty from a range of disciplines to develop curriculum and adopt high-impact teaching approaches that help students master traditional literacy skills, like reading and writing, and also emerging literacies and competencies, such as information literacy, critical thinking, and creative problem solving. I've been elected to faculty senate twice and appointed to committees to revise the school's general education program and amend our faculty bylaws. I bring that up because they're large and complex tasks. They're difficult tasks, and I'm respected for my willingness to see multiple points of view on contentious issues, to agree robustly but respectfully, and to dig into details and develop creative approaches that help break through impasses. I understand that education is complex, that every challenge we face is multifaceted and multi-layered, and I believe the skills I've gained through my experience will be assets as we move through the budget process and as we work together to set the district's priorities for teaching and learning. Going back to Springfield College, I really believe in the college's mission to educate the whole person in spirit, mind, and body. So that is, I believe we have to teach our children the essential knowledge, skills, and competencies that they're going to need to succeed in the emerging digital world, to succeed in careers that don't even exist today in many cases. I also understand that we have to inculcate attitudes and behaviors that will allow our youth to thrive, and I hope mend a society with unprecedented levels of stress, disparity, and polarization. I deeply value another aspect of Springfield's mission, and that's to educate students for leadership in service to others. Like all of you here tonight, I too deeply believe in community service, and that's why I served as a Vista volunteer, why I co-chaired the Joshua Eaton Task Force, why I joined the Board of Arcasa, why I developed an educational program for RCTV, and why I ran for a seat on the Board of Library Trustees, and why I submitted my application for this position, why I'm here tonight. I view our community as an organism. I believe that the health of one part affects the health of all the other parts. I believe that strong and healthy schools contribute to a strong and healthy community and vice versa. The stronger our community, the stronger our schools. I believe that we will rise together or will fall together, that we'll thrive together or will stagnate together. Like it or not, I believe we're all interconnected in this town. I subscribe to the notion of an intergenerational compact, where as a community, we take care of each other, we invest in each other, and as our ancestors did, we act intentionally to leave a proud legacy to our future generations. I'll base every decision I make as a school committee member on a simple but profound question, what's best for the 4,500 children in our schools, and by extension, the 20,000 adults that are connected to them in this community? Because we'll be facing complex issues in the coming months and years, at times we might disagree. How to best answer that question, but I hope you will never have cause to doubt my intentions. If I'm appointed to fill this opening, and if the voters choose to elect me in April, I'm committed to using my role on school committee for the benefit of our whole community, our children, of course, but also our adults and our elders. I view our public schools, much like our public library and our police force and our senior center, as a resource that benefits all of us, directly and indirectly. I'll work to the best of my ability to expand our school's role in promoting lifelong learning, in building community, and to strengthen our proud public education legacy for my children who are in these schools, and also for your children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone having questions?
No.
I, I was, that was my resume, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Very impressive, and I think it's just the right strengths and capacity at the right time. Appreciate you being willing to, to step up to the appointment.
I really would consider it a privilege to serve with the sport.
You spoke particularly about the concept of healing, which I think is particularly appropriate these days. And that's at a number of different levels. It's at the neighborhood level, it's at the, it's at the town level, and frankly, I think it's at obviously the national level. But we really deal with the nuts and bolts of educating children. It's really kind of the lowest level of that. And so I really look forward to a focus on trying to heal that divide that sometimes separates us. But thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, John, and I look forward to that as well.
Yeah, actually, I had a, I had a question. Mine doesn't use one page. So, clearly, you have the bona fides to do this job, you know, to, your teaching experience, your administrative experience, all the work you've done. And that's a question. So, I guess my question's more of a practical one. And I actually was writing this down as you were talking, sort of about breaking impasses, intergenerational compact, working with the whole community. Obviously, the school committee sets up huge priorities in the budget for the 4,500 kids, and obviously, that impacts the families. But the thing that you said that was really profound was the sort of connection between what the schools do and the rest of the community. Lately, and especially if you read some of the survey comments that the Selectmen surveyed, it just seems to be-
I read them all.
Digging in, you know, we're kind of, and we, and we have sort of, I'm not gonna say factions, that's not the right word, but there's sort of disagreements between whether you have kids in the public schools or you don't have kids in the public schools, whether you lived here 50 years ago or you moved in here 10 years ago, whether you're a senior or whether you're a working person with two people trying to pay the mortgage on the house you paid $20,000 over asking. So, can you talk a little bit about sort of some of the strategies, how you would talk about implementing that, not just for the schools, because we're gonna have a roll ride vote in April. How are, you know, how would you work with the school committee and also, you know, with the rest of us? And what are the things that you, how would you sort of implement, but how would you message that? Because that, I think, is really, kind of, you struck a really, really powerful nugget that all of us could learn from. So, if you have some experiences you'd like to share, I'd really love to know.
Just a point of correction, we may have been able to-
That was quite a question. That was quite a question. I think that although we have some divisions in our town, and as John notes, in our state and our country, I think that we actually have more in common. And I think we have to identify what we have in common. And I think that what we have in common is a desire to leave something for the next generation, and to take care of our elders. It's the intergenerational compact. I think that we have shared values of community. And I do think that the schools can be helpful in the sense that learning is becoming a lifelong endeavor, as we know. And the schools, I think, can continue to offer programs, like we've been seeing with Parent University, Sam, looking for Sandy, who isn't here. That was such a powerful program for families. And there was even questions from the school committee already about how can we extend programs like that, say, to our elders? How can we build on programs like the reading program at Joshua Eaton, where elders do get to share their experience with our kids and teach our kids and be engaged with our kids? So, we have some structures in place that we can replicate and develop and build. I actually have already started talking with RPS administration about perhaps partnering with a community college. A lot of them in Boston are bursting at the seams. Yes, Bunker Hill started offering midnight classes a couple of years ago. Their classrooms are so full. And I wonder if we can work with the community college maybe to offer classes here. Seniors can take classes tuition-free, I believe, at community colleges. What if we offered something like a geriatric certificate, so people who are leaving the workforce could get retrained to work with their neighbors, for instance? What if we offered an early childhood program, so moms maybe going back into the workforce could get trained to do work they would find meaningful, and maybe some of the internship programs could help support programs like RISE? So, I think if we really keep our eye on the ball of community-wide education, and maybe even partnering some more with the library that's also engaged in that work, that that might help bring some of the different sectors of the community together on common ground. So, that's one idea I had.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm eager to tap your experiences and your skills in your resume, and just now you talked about your interdisciplinary approach to learning, and how that's coupled with what Dr. Anna Ornstein also talked about, the difference between teaching and learning, and actually engaging the student's heart, mind, soul, and body in the learning experience. And, but you didn't just mention that in terms of the students, you mentioned it in terms of the teachers as well, and, and bringing all dimensions of the school experience into the beneficial learning equation. And so, hearing these ideas and reading and hearing about that, I'm really excited to be able to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to appoint Sherry Vandenacker to the Reading School Committee to replace Dr. Gary Nyhan.
Second. And this requires a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Enthusiastic yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for being here.
Take two minutes.
Yep.
Only two minutes.
I think, uh, call the meeting back to order?
I can move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Anyone have anything they'd like to remove? All those in favor. Five zero. Did we already do the, any, the North Shore? Did you have something that you wanted to present on that, the-
Sure. So, as you know, we are a member of the North Shore Education Consortium, Special Education Collaborative. In the Articles of Agreement, which I've included in your packet, there is a clause that when there is ever a community that is requesting to become a member, that not only does the Board have to approve it, which the Board did approve, which I'm a member of that Board, but each school committee has to approve as well. So, Ipswich is requesting to come onboard as a member of the consortium. Essentially, what this means is that they would get a different rate for their tuition than a non-member. They do have a substantially large population of students currently that attend North Shore Consortium, and so they, it made sense for them to do it from, from their community perspective. They also being, they are, they are geographically in the same area as most of the other Boards, Board schools that are part of the consortium now. So, the, the Board voted unanimously to accept Ipswich, and so now each school district, each school committee has to vote on this as well. And then I believe if they're, if they get, I think it's two-thirds, then they would be accepted as a full member.
Second motion.
Move to approve the addition of Ipswich as a member district to the North Shore Education Consortium.
Second. Any questions?
Actually, just, I saw no downside to, to voting in Ipswich, because having other communities participate brings the prices down and adds the expertise to their Board.
Correct.
I did have a technical question that has no bearing on our vote. It was talking about the governance and leadership, and that all the superintendents that are members of the Board of Directors have a specialty, a focus. I just was wondering which category you're in, finance, facilities, policy-
Oh, I'm personnel. I'm sorry. I, I had to think for a second. Yeah, I'm on, I'm the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee.
Was curious to me that they wouldn't have already been a member.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I believe they belong to the Crest Collaborative right now.
And they can stay with that?
Yeah, just like we belong to two.
Two, right.
You can belong to more than one.
Yes.
So, being part of that personnel process, actually, Chair of it, does that expose you to sources of other trained personnel, or that you can also bring back?
My primary role, I'm involved with contract negotiations when their collective bargaining agreements are up. I work very closely with the Executive Director when there's a personnel, a major personnel issue, work very closely with their Labor Council, those types of things.
Good experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for the vote. All those in favor. Five zero. And we-
We're going to report here, and then the liaison.
Let's do the lia, we'll end with reports. So, does anyone have interest to be a liaison to the Human Relations Advisory Committee?
Do we want to wait for Sherry to join? No. Sorry. She wouldn't join.
Why don't we, why don't we put this on the next agenda?
You can postpone.
Yeah, postpone that.
I mean, especially, I was, I was sort of kidding, but she may be very interested. It would be nice to be able to just have the dialogue.
Leave that until the next one. So, now we have reports, and those two.
No, other than I know, we, Linda and I did attend the last, last Tuesday's Board of Selectmen meeting on the public safety and public safety, fire, Arcasa. And so, just to note that the Selectmen meet tomorrow night, I believe that's at the library again, right?
Correct.
So, they're at the conference room in the Reading Public Library, and these are the budget discussions that are important to everyone in our community. And so, it would be great to see more parents and community members there.
Are these just value discussions, or they actually showing numbers?
They're value, it was a value, really.
Because I watched a lot of it, and it wasn't, it was more of a, yeah.
I think right now it is, I believe the last night is when the Town Manager will be presenting probably more financial, which is Thursday, oh, Wednesday night, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
This week?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, sorry. Great.
I was just told that there's a CPAC meeting on Thursday, January 4th, at seven, here.
Location to be determined.
Oh, thank you.
There'll be an email coming out.
That's mine. Oh, and Red just had a discussion about Reading Embraces Diversity. Had a meeting with the library, talking about working on a World Cafe program for the community. So, stay tuned. And then I, there's another Reading Embraces Diversity meeting at the beginning of January. So, I'm not gonna say the date now, because I'm worried I might get it wrong, because it's not solid yet. But stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, tomorrow night, the facilities, Joe Huggins is gonna be doing a presentation on the capital plan and the town core facilities budget. He'll be doing his presentation for the schools at the January 8th meeting. Mrs. Dow and I will be going tomorrow night, really to be there to answer any questions about any of the school-related items that are on the capital plan. We are gonna be talking a little bit about Killam. Very similar to what I read to you a couple of weeks ago in my report on Killam, the MSBA report, and where, you know, where Killam lie on that report, and the priorities that MSBA uses for funding, priorities putting one school ahead of another, the categories. So, all the things I discussed a couple of weeks ago is very similar to what I'm gonna be talking about tomorrow night. The, the only piece that may be a little bit new is before we would be able to move it anywhere with Killam, and where, in terms of a bigger plan, is that you really need more information on what are the actual needs of the, the building itself, the Killam School. So, one of the things that the Town Manager, myself, Mrs. Dow, Joe Huggins have talked about is getting a study done of Killam that will provide more information so that both the Building Committee, the school building, the, the school building, the Town Building Committee and the School Committee can have more information moving forward. So, I think what we will see is in the capital plan in the upcoming years, there will be some money put aside to do a feasibility study to take a look at what are the true needs of, of Killam. We do know some of them, as I've mentioned before. Certainly, the-
We do know some of them, as I've mentioned before, certainly the water issue, which has been mitigated at this point. Also, we have some windows replacement issues, some, you know, boiler heating issues, those types of things, fire suppression system.
AEA.
NEA, right. Those are the ones that stick out right now, but I think it would be important to get more details from a feasibility study so that we can get all of the information possible before a decision is made on what can be done next.
But that's not in this budget.
No. No. So really, that's all we're going to be saying about Killam. There is no plan in the near future for a building project for Killam. That would be obviously part of a larger discussion, and as I mentioned to you a few weeks ago, the MSBA has some pretty strict categories by statute on how you could get placed on a list to receive MSBA funding. And right now, Killam doesn't qualify for any of those areas because it's a fairly structurally sound building. It's in very good shape. We've, you know, we've maintained it well over the years, and it does have some issues, as we've mentioned earlier, but not to the level of MSBA.
Yes.
I just think that the way it was stated on the selectmen's agenda was a little misleading or confusing to people, so it's really, the dialogue is about the Killam School. There is no building project in place, and the agenda item says Killam Building Project, and I think that was very, it was confusing for people. So this is, it's good to talk about it, and that the Building Committee is in place now, you know, which it will be in place for this, some future feasibility study. So that's good. To assist the school committee with the...
And the Town Building Committee has been doing its own assessment of each building. They've got, I know they've gone to Killam, I was there the night that they were doing their assessment there, and they are going to each of the schools to do their own assessment as well.
Good.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, and that with the Boy Scouts last week, they were, they had wonderful questions, Wee Bloos, they had wonderful questions, and I know that this Killam question is on their minds and other people's minds. One of the things that they brought up was this water situation that you said was mitigated, and the conversation was about the water bubblers, and so I just wanted to reiterate what you were saying is that the water now through the coolers is safe, that the school department went above and beyond tests to make sure that we discovered the issue and that the water coolers that are there provide the water, and people are not drinking from the water bubblers anymore.
They can't, they've been shut off. They've been capped.
For a year now.
Yeah, that's been the case for over a year, and the water that they're drinking is bottled water.
Right, and so what I was saying is the mitigation, the solution is that those coolers can stay in an ongoing way, so there isn't an issue around the safety of the water at the school. I just wanted to reiterate that since it was a concern expressed by the Wee Bloos.
Yes.
I just have a, it's more a thought to share with you as you approach the idea of a feasibility study. If possible, to look beyond the needs of the Killam School, but district-wide at the elementary level. We have three schools with modulators that won't last forever, so if it were possible to approach that project, not only looking at what does this one building need, but also, especially if we're talking a longer time horizon, to also think through what are the needs across the district, and might this project be able to solve those needs? Maybe, maybe not, but I'd like that question to at least be asked.
Sure. That's a very good point.
Is that it for you?
That's it, yes.
We're ready to adjourn, I think, correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. All right, a motion to adjourn till January 8th, correct?
Yep. All those in favor? Five zero.
Excellent.
Thank you.